13th, 2025. Meeting. This meeting will be livestreamed via Zoom. Public comments. Well, I'm sorry, I'm reading from the wrong prompts. My apologies. This meeting is called to order in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on February 3rd, 2025, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to the left and right. And please, as always, remember to speak into your microphones. Just before we get started on things, I'm just going to take a moment to step outside of our regularly scheduled agenda. Our regular engineer representative from CME Associates, Bruce Koch, has announced that he's retired and he's no longer going to be joining us. I wish I'd known at our last meeting when we had him that it was going to be the last time, but I just want to say, Bruce, I'm sure you're watching from home because you miss us. I appreciate all the hard work you've done. You've been an excellent engineer for our board and for the town in general for many, many years, and you will be very much missed. So enjoy your retirement. If you feel like coming back, we would always love to see you. That being said, we'll go on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's take a roll call, please. Ms. Yan? Yes. Mr. Brusher?
Here.
Mr. Chin?
Here.
Mr. Hazy?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Linares? Mr. Malley? Mr. Furman?
Yeah.
Mr. Strong Cardinal?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Casanzo?
Yep.
Okay, very good. And of course, Mr. Koch is not here. We will have a new representative from CME at our next meeting, I suppose, and then we'll get to know him when he joins us. All right, let's do some housekeeping. We have two sets of minutes to review. We'll start with the big one, the March 6th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. And as is my privilege, I have a couple of comments to get us started off with on changes. On page six, in the second paragraph, it uses the word "bollards", but it's spelled with an A. It's, I believe it's "bollards" with an O. It's B-O-L-L-A-R-D-S. There's two instances of that. And then on the 1, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, fifth paragraph or the second paragraph up in the bottom, if there's, in the second sentence, it says "litzler", I think that word's supposed to be "litter". And then scrolling later on, on page 15, on the second to last paragraph, there's a reference to a case Lochner versus Campoli. Lochner spelled L-O-E-C-H-N-E-R. And then in the last paragraph, there's a case Kevin Malanga versus West Orange. I believe that name is Malanga, M-A-L-A-N-G-A. And those are my comments. So I'll open it up to the rest of the board for their comments on our voluminous March 6th, 2025 meeting minutes.
I have a comment.
Yes.
So I know that these minutes are not verbatim and it's not like word for word. So I won't correct any of the other things because I spoke a lot at that meeting. But I will say on page 27, paragraph four, sentence two, I would like to clarify that I did not say that I think the Borough should be applauded. I said that I think the Borough should be applauding a business such as Classic Cleaners. So I just want to make sure that that sentiment is expressed.
Should be applauding, not applauded.
Well, it says she thinks as a Borough we should be applauded. That's not what I said.
Great. So is it, of course, we should be applaud?
Applaud.
Oh, applauding a successful business?
Yes. Because my sentiment was that we should be applauding Classic Cleaners for being a great business.
And I think the demodification that the chair suggested, if you agree, isn't appropriate.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I've got that one in my marked up set here that I'm going to go by. Anyone else?
Yes.
What?
On page 26, second paragraph, we have the most comments. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines down. I just wanted to, I'm not sure what is referred to by the BB ugly gun, but if possible, we checked to see if it was a, is there anything?
Yeah.
I see it. I don't know what an ugly BB ugly gun is. Maybe it's really a BB gun.
Maybe it's a reference to the former BB Big?
That's what I think it is, yeah.
I think it's a reference to the former BB Big and somehow autocorrect turned that into BB ugly gun.
I, I think that was a, the nature of that comment might have been, why are we doing it for this property, not the BB Big property?
Yes, that's what I.
Okay.
All right, anyone?
Yes. I do have a question whether we should be mentioning the first names of Mr. Olson. It's Thomas Olson, Mr. Lee, it's Robert Lee.
What page are we on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page nine, I believe is where they first get mentioned.
Page nine, first paragraph, Mr. Olson. Yes, I see at the very top, the first words are the first instance. What was his first name?
I believe it's Thomas.
It is now.
He doesn't say his full name other places in the document. He doesn't say Thomas.
And then you have the same comment from Mr. Lee later in the same paragraph?
Yes.
Is this his first name? Do we know?
Robert.
Robert. Yes.
And then on the bottom of page 12, Mr. Seth. I think that's the first. Aware, his name isn't in speech by someone else present. So that would be huge stuff.
Peter?
Yes, Peter.
All right. I've got Peter in there now.
I would just say that I'm really enjoying the minutes. Whoever, it's so detailed. And I know, I mean, I think you're really privileged to have such detailed minutes and I think.
I thought the content was really good.
It's a great, it's a great story. I mean, like, it is really good that the public, they read this, can, were there actually know what was said and understood the details. It's fantastic.
It can be trying sometimes to watch the video and try to scroll through to see what things are and having something that you can reference with, you know, look, find, functions are often very helpful. So.
Do you have anything? Really? Good job, Murray. Okay. Last call? Anyone else? Okay. I'll solicit a motion to approve our March 6th minutes subject to the adjustments that we just put on the record.
Motion? Second?
Second by Alan. Roll call?
You don't really need to roll call. You can do it if you want by a voice vote and then make sure you get the abstentions.
Okay. All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right, moving to our much more streamlined October 16th, 2025 minutes. I'll open it up, see if anyone has any comments on these. Okay. Seeing none, I'll solicit a motion to approve the October 16th, 2025 minutes as presented.
So move.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
I've seen.
All right, let's take, wait, we got a call on the abstention. You know what? Let's do a roll call on this one so at least we can get the abstentions. Right. Mr. Brusher?
I'm staying.
Mr. Chin? Mr. Chin, do you approve or abstain?
I'm sorry, I approve.
Okay. Mr. Hazy?
Abstain.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Abstain.
Mr. Furman?
I abstain.
Mr. Strong Cardinal?
I abstain.
Does anybody have this?
There were five of us.
There were just five of us, that's all you needed.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Yan? I was there too. I say yes. Okay.
Just to go back really quickly, I needed abstaining from the March 6th minutes.
All right. We'll amend our official vote on the March 6th. Thank you for that. It feels like you've always been with us. To note that.
I just, I just had a moment.
All right. And with that, we'll go on to. Oh, wrong objection.
Make a trap for it. It's my mic on Tuesday, don't break it. Don't touch.
With that, we'll go to our new matter. We are presented to us from our Borough Council, a consistency review of ordinance 25-2117 and ordinance adopting the redevelopment plan entitled 330-334 Veriton Avenue Redevelopment Plan Pursuant to NJSA 48:12A-1.
Madam Chair, if I can, this is actually a consistency review. Of course, with the municipal areas law, section 26, 26A, which is your standard type of consistency review. In terms of the redevelopment law, you have already dealt with that and you've already made recommendations as referenced in the ordinance, which is 25-12, I forgot that, 2117. And in the second paragraph, it does acknowledge the fact that the planning board reviewed the redevelopment plan and provided six recommendations pursuant to the provisions of subsection 7E. So that's already been taken care of. But now what you're doing is the matter has been introduced for first reason by the Borough Council and as per the municipal areas law under the section stated, you are required to make comments as to whether or not you feel as though this is consistent with the master plan. I note that you've had a fairly extensive discussion about that very fact previously, but you still have the obligation to do that.
Very good. Thank you for the clarifications. As always, it's much appreciated because there's a lot of statutes flowing around and a lot of procedural back and forth. So here we are checking on the consistency of what's before us and we'll turn over to our, oh my gosh, our beloved planner for the township to give us a review and overview of what's been presented to us. Well, he's.
I don't need to say it.
That's exactly it.
Thank you for that. Let's see, can we slide to working in this chair?
But it's a strange one to see, so that's definitely worse.
Great. So we are here as a madam chairperson has indicated, a ordinance that's been introduced by council for the redevelopment plan entitled 330-334 Veriton Avenue. Redevelopment plan, simply, this is the right aid property. This concerns block 3001, block 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 30. So in terms of the area, as you're probably well aware, the right aid property is a pretty big significant part of the 400, 300 block between South Fourth and South Fifth Avenue. Consists of a large building and a large parking lot. This is across the street from the Wells Fargo parcel, that's part of the super fresh site. And this is also family, the stop and shop of redevelopment plan area. And as far as the procedure, as council indicated, the Borough Council prepared a redevelopment plan and introduced the ordinance and is now before this board. So we're down here, sort of the second to last step. We're consistency of this plan with the master plan. And then upon the recommendations from the planning board, it will be forwarded to the governing body for the secondary, just like any other typical land development ordinance. In terms of the statutory requirements, it's provided in local housing law. The, there's eight components of the redevelopment plan, as you met. And I'm going to go through each of them very, very briefly. Mainly talking about the relationship to local objectives. That's really talking about the master plan, county plan, contiguous municipalities, as well as the state plan, proposed land use and building requirements, that's the zoning requirements in the plan, provisions for relocation of housing units, properties to be acquired, inventory of housing units on the site, as well as plans for formal housing replacement and plan for zero emission charge infrastructure. Those last two, that's sorry, the last one was a recent amendment to the redevelopment law. As council has indicated, planning board's role is two parts. One, must find that all provisions shall be either substantially consistent or be designed to be effectuate, to effectuate the master plan. A little bit different than the traditional land development boards, which you might, must find that's not inconsistent with the master plan. Here, you could actually make a finding that, no, it's not that consistent, but does effectuate the master plan. So in terms of the redevelopment law, it does allow you for the board to make that determination in a little bit different manner. But it's very similar to the, whether or not it's consistent with the master plan. And in terms of timeframe, the planning board, within 45 days of referral, must provide its report, which is usually by virtue of a resolution containing its recommendations. In terms of redevelopment activities at where we're done. So in terms of the right aid property, this is just a right aid property, no additional properties, just right aid property. All right, back in 2005, it was part of the larger downtown areas to be studied and was designated area redevelopment. And later that year in September, a redevelopment plan was adopted, including right aid property. But five years later, as a result of litigation between right aid and the Borough, as council remembers well, the property was renovated through site plan application. And as part of that, the agreement was to remove the right aid property from the redevelopment plan as well as from the area need to redevelopment designation. What that meant was they reverted back to the original zoning, it's no longer part of redevelopment. Six years later, right around the time LRK became involved and I became a planner, we, the Borough, put together and designated entire town as an area need rehabilitation. Again, what this means is that despite it being removed from the redevelopment plan, from the 2005 redevelopment plan, it is under the area need to rehab designation for our entire town, which means you can't still do redevelopment plan just under the rehab designation instead of the redevelopment designation. That just means you can't use combination, can't offer 30-year pilots to get all do rehab programs or you can still do redevelopment plans. And since that time, obviously, as you all have been aware, as you've been instrumental in playing this role of adopting many redevelopment plans and site plan applications, effectively downtown planning, which includes the development of a downtown plaza in South Third Avenue. And I say that, that's important because it does relate to why we're here, related to the right aid property. As you're aware, 2023, Friday, first went through, first volunteer, Chapter 11 bankruptcy. And again, second time, May, this past year, May 2025. And as of last month, this is at the bottom heading, you see all the right aid stories that closed. And you can hardly tell, and it's partly why there's a problem with the buildings, sort of the white elephant in our downtown. Not as dramatic as the stop and shop closure, but it still has some similarities related to this. So this is the right aid property as it was a few months ago before its closure, but it's hardly any different than it is today. You can hardly tell it's vacant. And then in fact, that's sort of your secondary entrance, but that's where a lot of the vehicular traffic entered into the building. Property is not very well maintained, has a very large parking area, but does not connect to South Third. That's the bottom left photo, that's the view. It's so easily, you can so easily connect to it, but you just can't because there's a landscape line in between. So the purpose of this redevelopment plan really is to, because it is limited to one site, obviously a site-specific implementation plan. But this really is, is a, I would say it's more of a borough-driven, it's not necessarily a developer-driven project, where someone comes in and say, hey, my project, let's negotiate, let's collaborate, and then we have a plan to put together zoning to effectuate that project. This is more of a zoning strategy to effectuate options to allow the property owner to consider other uses that would not otherwise be allowed to underlying zoning. So then that speaks to the second point, providing additional permitted uses that are appropriate for this white elephant. Frankly, it's not a great looking building. It's extremely expensive and cost prohibitive to just simply, in a perfect world, simply it's cut into three parts and say, here, there's three new stores. It's just too expensive, it's not going to happen. So you can either redevelop it, but you can't do that because there's no pilot and it's going to be super expensive to do it, so that's not happening. So the other option was, what can we do? What's the trend had been in these types of buildings? Because after all, all these right aids are closing and other uses are going in. There's a lot of uses that we've been hearing about are medical offices, which includes urgent care, outpatient services, daycare centers. I believe there's one to open to the right aid on Hamilton Avenue in Franklin. This is like, well, of course. And then even touching, the CBS that was on Pearl and New Street, that closed in favor of Atlantic Health Medical Office. So this is not some far-fetched concept from the West Coast. This is happening locally. And I think, so to the credit to the mayor and council, trying to be proactive, store all enclosed a couple of months ago and try to put the zoning in place for something to be allowed, be put into its place. That being said, there's an opportunity to allow, open up these use for this particular site, for this particular building type. This is an opportunity to create that connection to that South Third, especially given the plaza to me, they're closing off South Third. This is a great opportunity to connect between South Fourth and South Third, just like what we did for the Stop and Shop site, which was maintaining that access from South Fifth to South Fourth. That way, rely less on access and prevent curb cuts on Avenue, which is important to the Borough and in its master plan. It's just a condition that, again, it's one property, consists of seven lots, 1.67 acres, pretty big, 15,000 square foot building. That's pretty big on its own, but it's pretty, fairly small relative to the size of it a lot. That's very suburban concept, it's odd in a downtown city. In a perfect world, this should be redeveloped and that's still on the table. This plan allows for a future redevelopment. This is a sort of an interim measure to allow for other permitted uses in this current building. The property, again, because of the litigation lost its 2005 downtown redevelopment plan standards, it's now down to the underlying zoning. It's split zone between CBD and the PO, professional office. Your ordinance indicates, thankfully, not many towns have this, your ordinance says depending on, if you're split zone, you go to the zone that's predominantly the land area that occupies most of the property, so we rely on the CBD. But offices are not allowed on the ground floor and neither are daycare. In terms of the planning relationship, as we did the 2019 master plan, a lot of the comments that came from the public as well as the subcommittee and us as planners, we found there's a high number of vacant properties and the storefronts, high turnover and a lack of consolidated parking and access. So we, it was interesting that this is a perfect opportunity to sort of rectify this issue for this specific site. So it's our determination, my recommendation, that we're finding this plan, as you find out the standards are, is consistent and intends to effectuate the master plan. Doesn't really have a major impact on Edison, the Skyway and New Brunswick because this property is in the middle of town, doesn't really affect any development there. It's consistent with the comprehensive plans to, in terms of business development and development on the 27. And for the state plans, they're focusing on centering and re-centering and economic development of its downtown cores. So in terms of its relationship to all the plans, our local master plan, contiguous municipalities, county plan, state plan, this plan effectuates and promotes those documents. In terms of what the zoning requirements do, so we are amending the land use regulations, at least relative to the CBD zone. So what we're doing is we're bringing in all the permitted uses that we brought in in our other downtown redevelopment plans, that track A to D, so a little bit more modern uses, which we're going to bring it into our CBD zone elsewhere as a project that Terry, Richard and I are working on to update our CBD zoning and C zoning for that matter. But for the benefit of right aid and property owner, not right aid, but just for property owner, we also permitting additional permitted uses, but they require redevelopment agreement. And that's to be important. These additional permitted uses would include medical facilities, which would be urgent care, outpatient, nursery, schools and child daycare centers, indoor amusement and recreation, as well as offices. In terms of the development standards, where a redevelopment agreement is required, meaning if the property owner wants to bring in a tenant that has those medical office, indoor recreation, amusement or nursery school, they will be required to provide a cross-access and parking use between the property and the Borough owned properties fronting on South. This will ensure pedestrian and vehicular connection and circulation between South Third and South Fourth. In terms of other development standards, the hottest part requirements is one per 500 square feet of office space, one per 1,000 square feet of other non-residential space and then one space for every 1.33, sorry, 1.33 spaces for every one dwelling unit in the future redevelopment, if there is one for future mixed-use development. So we're sort of forward-thinking about in the future, if we're going to be on, we set the standards. In terms of the setbacks and coverage and height controls, the similar to the CBD, four stories, 50 feet is generous. That again is for the benefit of our future redevelopment for mixed-use when it happens in future. And the design standards that follow through, I believe in section 6.5, all are consistent with the standards that we've been putting into our other redevelopment plans, including tracks A to D. So we're trying to set a higher level of detail for parking lot landscaping, parking structure, screening and whatnot, as well as for, again, for really future development, things like universal access design and green infrastructure and sustainable design. So going back to the steps requirement, so we talked about the relationship to the local objectives. We find that this plan will be consistent and effectuate the master plan in terms of really addressing vacant and turnover, vacant properties and turnover. And really trying to use the opportunity of this building type, the white elephant, what types of uses are appropriate and consistent with other developments surrounding Highland Park that's appropriate for Highland Park. We had considered, should we just be allowing this all over CBD? And we did not think that was appropriate. So that's why I just sort of looked at, this fits in this particular building, but we don't want to harm the rest of the community by allowing it everywhere. So we felt this is a good opportunity to put these types of uses at this particular location because it's building form and the parking behind it. For both land use and building requires, we did talk about what the zoning standards are, just additional permitted uses, but they require redevelopment agreement. And that redevelopment agreement requires cross-access agreement. So it's a win-win for both the Borough as well as the property owner. In terms of provision for relocation of housing units and my number six, that's number three and also number six inventory of all affordable housing units. There's no housing on the site, so we don't need to be concerned with relocating them. We don't need to worry about their work rule relocation assistance plan for businesses or residents because the property's vacant. We were talking about its relationship to other plans. That should have been Edison, Skyway and New Brunswick. I copied this from touching, my apologies. Number seven, the plan for replacement housing units. Again, we don't need to worry about that since there's no one existing. And number eight, plan for zero emission charge infrastructure. The plan does anticipate the need for public EV. So we encourage the property owner to include public EV charge infrastructure in collaboration with the Borough, especially as it seeks to build and activate the South Third Plaza as well as the parking area adjacent. That's pretty much it. Pretty simple plan, rezoning strategy. This will serve as a superseding plan over the underlying zoning. This will be the new zoning, so we'll have to update our zoning map as part of this effort as well.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll open it up to the board for questions and comments about your presentation.
You spoke about creating another point of egress for South Third Avenue by combining this parking lot. And I know that in that area, there's the Petmar Building and their parking lot there. It's like kind of a drop where you can access it from South Third Avenue and then it's just kind of a weird kind of maneuver that you have to get to that parking lot. Would you be considering combining all of that into one large parking lot that's accessible both on South Fourth and South Third, but consists of parking spaces for all of the buildings on that stretch between South Third and South Fourth that's relatively basic?
So some of those properties do have their own parking, but to the corner building in your drawing, it doesn't. This plan doesn't address that, but it doesn't mean that we can't consider that. It's something we've talked about and this should be a shared parking facility.
Right.
For all this, there's also a driveway condition where you have to go through the right aid property to get to the rear of another property. So there already is an easement or defective easement condition there. That's all on the table. Uh, that's all on the table, so when we do work with the property owner to consolidate the access to South Third through the three last borough owns into a larger parking facility for a farmer's market parking and just general parking. Uh, that's definitely on the table, but it needs some further coordination. Uh, this plan didn't really plan ahead that far because it's getting too much in the weeds, but it's definitely on the table. And this is a concern, and it'll be a lot easier to address all of that at once, I agree.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
And you wanna go? Um, so you, um, great work. Um, the, the, the use of daycare centers, childcare centers. Um, I think you said it's not currently in, permitted in the zone, right? And then you're adding it in, um, I guess maybe, maybe council can help, but I, I thought there was statute that supersedes municipal zoning that allows for all daycare centers in non-commercial zones. But that's just state law, so even if a municipality certainly didn't reflect that, it's there. So it's the, it was, it's already there, I mean, you know, so I think you're adding it, so you're just being more consistent with state law. The other thing I think I read was that, um, parking requirements aren't, are no man, management parking requirements for daycare centers. Um, and I go, I mean, I'm, I've got just the open, so I, I really, I think we should probably look at that. Um, but I, I, I also doesn't include, included in F A R calculations or anything like that. So, you know, I just think maybe, maybe just sort of check the statutes again, because I know you have some parking requirements with daycare centers. Um, that's the one mentioned that, um, can you explain the difference between, as you structure the permitted uses, there's permitted uses, six point two point one, and then there's permitted uses requiring redevelopment, six point two point five. So if the property owner wants to, feel like it's almost like a, a, a tiered menu, like if you, you have one of the principal uses under six point two point one, you don't need a redevelopment plan. If you want some of the, I guess, tax benefits of a rehab, this is a redevelopment plan, but under rehabilitation, uh, designation, if it's some tax benefits, you have to use these land uses to be open to having some sort of, you know, tax, uh, incentives, right? Is that how it's?
I would say it is a menu of options for sure. For six point two point one is just a list of really updated zoning standards, so permitted uses they're allowed to use now. And given that this would be a superseding zone, and we had to create a situation where you had to allow certain uses that don't require redevelopment, because that would probably violate the fourteenth amendment. Um, at least some attorneys I talked to, uh, for six point two point five, those are, these are other uses, but you have to enter a redevelopment agreement. I'm not sure if we ever talked about tax.
Okay.
Break or benefit, I don't, and I don't wanna comment on that. Uh, this is mainly, if you wanna use these uses, you have to enter an agreement. It's basically saying, if you want those uses and not get a use variance, work with the borough to agree on it. But to get that, those uses, you have to give us access to South.
Oh, okay, that's, thank you, I wasn't sure, I'm like, are they all permitted and, but I, I see what you're saying. I understand, they have a choice, they can go down and enter a redevelopment agreement. And there are some things that will be part of that agreement, like cross-access. Or they can just go ahead and, and say, well, we're just gonna tenant out the building and just get the building permits and be done with it, or they could do that.
They could, which they could do now.
Right.
Uh, but, I mean, part of the reason we're going through this effort is because the property owner is working with the borough to help me to fill out the space. I mean, we could have said, just split the building to three, it's just not practical. Um, and we, we were running a risk of this building being empty for years. Uh, and I think this is a good opportunity to get the access that we want.
Yeah, that, that clarify, thank, thank you.
No, I was just saying, but people who wanna permitted principal use are not precluded from doing a redevelopment agreement. Yes, Matt.
Um, I just wanted to clarify the tax of agents or pilots or any non, this is not a tax. Um, it's not part of any discussions that we had in any way, shape or form.
Yes.
Okay, solar panels be put, uh, over the parking lot. Could solar panels work over the parking lot, like records as in many of their properties?
Um, I, I would argue that there are customary incidental accessory structures and uses, there was probably a good site plan. Uh, and then I think as per the statute, uh, only the concrete pillars recount towards improvement coverage. But developments is the, what's underneath is the paid parking lot.
That is the case in terms of, uh, certainly the, uh, solar panels. It's only, it's only the structures that are holding them up.
Right.
That are accounted for improvement coverage.
I think Al wants to go with that, I wrote comment about that.
Yeah, I have a question about the, uh, if a childcare facility were to be located at this site. Um, it's my belief that all New Jersey licensed childcare centers have to have outdoor play areas. I'm not sure if we let children playing in the parking lot, it probably wouldn't be the outcome, but I'm wary of, uh, of having that use in the facility without, you know, significant changes to the existing traffic circulation on the park.
Yeah, we're, we're a little skeptical as well, it requires significant changes to the property. Uh, my assumption, if, in terms of urban design, how I would envision it would be, they would take away part of the building and keep it near the, what's left of the building. Uh, fifteen thousand square feet is a pretty big child daycare center, I think my son goes to one about that size, Kitty Academy. Um, but yes, there would be requirement for outdoor space and logically it should be not in the parking lot and certainly not detached with the parking lot in the middle. Um, but that's something they would have to figure out and obviously we need to come here for a site plan for that.
Okay.
Jeff, did you wanna come back to?
Can I just, um?
Sure.
Can I, I was petting, we'll leave the thoughts of the childcare facility aspect of it, uh, specifically related to the, um, thank you for giving the exact wording, we substantially consistent with, we're designed to effectuate. You know, the, the borough master plan, the county, all the, all the various goals that we have in place here. And I'm kind of thinking about this in terms of the specific, you know, we talked lots of times about the master plan, the specific things for the downtown and the master plan, right? Private downtown, um, pedestrian friendly, walkable, all that stuff. And there are a couple uses in there, and the daycare is at the top of the list for me that I think are a problem with some of those goals, specifically with like, uh, pick up and drop off car circulation. I'm thinking, um, not to pick up Noah's Ark, because I think Noah's Ark is great, but during like certain times of day, that parking lot backs up onto Raritan Avenue. Um, and that is, and this is already one of the busiest intersections in town, you know, it's like dangerous. Um, we have that no left turn policy there now, but, um, we all know it's not actually enforced to any degree. I see people making left turns there all the time. Um, so there are certain uses that I think are very, um, automobile intensive that would be a substantial downgrade, uh, relative to the ready for that site. I'm thinking, uh, office, you know, not like a medical office, but like an actual, like go-to-work office, um, a daycare facility where I'm having trouble seeing how it is substantially consistent with, or designed to effectuate those goals for the downtown at that site.
Of course, the problem that you have is what Jeff has already mentioned, and that is under section sixty six point six of the municipal language law. It indicates that if it's a licensed, uh, childcare center, that it is permitted in all non-residential zones.
All non-residential.
So, you know, this is really just effectuating what's already a part of the law.
I, I would disagree with, uh, I was just trying to find out about, uh, the value of daycare centers in downtown area, uh, especially if parents are walking their children from town to another location in town, it's a great opportunity to, uh, for parents to, I guess, engage in retail activity. Uh, for example, people who used to go to Yellow River Road, uh, daycare center, and then stop at Penn Stop, uh, under before after and get a a croissant and a bone milk and a chow.
It's very specific.
And this is close enough to keep that going if there was a daycare center there.
Yeah, so I see some, some value in, uh, in, if not prioritizing, then at least, um, ensuring that we don't, uh, try to discourage it indirectly. Um, perhaps through thoughtful traffic and loading policies, but again, um, that's getting a bit ahead of the pace.
Yes, good.
Out of curiosity, what happens to the retail liquor license at that location?
Um, I'll defer to Mr. Sir, hey, I'll continue. Uh, the liquor license has been sold, so that liquor license is now, um, has been bought by another party. Um, so they own that liquor license, the, the building itself does not have a liquor license.
Okay, so the liquor license that was sold, is it for someone to build another establishment in Highland Park?
That's unclear, it's, um, the person, I, I uh, it's unclear exactly what the intense, the person bought the liquor license, it's unclear exactly what he intends to do with it.
I think I'm unfamiliar with how the liquor licenses work, I think I was under the impression that liquor licenses are specific to a municipality. So are liquor licenses, if you purchase one, you can use it anywhere in the state, or how does that work?
In Highland Park, you can't.
It can only be, right, only in Highland Park, okay.
Another, another question, just, um, thinking about, like, you know, we, we what we're hearing is that likely the building will be tenanted and not be torn down in the short term. Um, if you said in the long term, ideally, it would be, so I, I, I think as, as, look at this redevelopment plan, it, it sort of lies to accomplish both as both eventual, both possible. I mean, your thought would be that at some point down the road, um, and you don't know, obviously speculation that, that you might have to amend this for this would be a new construction that would eventually take place, if a new construction that would.
Uh, it, it's possible, but I would argue the four stories, fifty feet, reduced parking standards, really high coverage requirements. But it's pretty beneficial, the only way they would wanna seek amendment is they wanna go to the fifth story. And that's really policy discussion.
Follow up with that would be, as you, if you're doing, if you're gonna go a redevelopment agreement with the property owner for, you know, uh, things like, and I'm gonna just be a ground mounted solar on a parking lot, makes any improvements like that kinda make re, future redevelopment for mixed use a lot harder. So just my thought would be that if, long term, we really wanna see mixed use, we would not encourage investments that make future reuse harder. And I think ground mounted solar would do that, you know, over, you know, the canopies, the canopy solar over sort of parking lot. That's, that's an investment that now makes it harder to rip up.
Uh, I agree, and it also goes to how long the leases for these new tenants go for. So that's why we're always in active discussions with property owner. So ultimately, we do wanna see the property being redeveloped, mixed use, much higher better use. Right now it's only fifteen, fifteen thousand square feet on one point six seven acres, that's extremely inefficient.
Low F A R.
Uh, but temporarily, this is a, Borough Council feels it's a good solution, uh, but I totally see your point, I agree.
In the future, should someone decide to tear this building down, build something else, and they build up to the max height of four stories? Could you use the rooftop as space for like a restaurant space or retail, not retail, but as some sort of like a vendor restaurant space without that counting as a fifth story?
Um, let me go back to the definition of height that we put in here.
Eight twenty-four.
I'll take twenty-three.
Well, that's the definition of height, oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-four. Uh, definitely height. So, or say they could put in a element to get access to it. It would have to be just a rooftop restaurant with no structure to it.
Right, so if they were using rooftop, it's just like outdoor seating.
Yeah.
They could potentially, uh, could potentially be abused.
Yeah, uh, but if there's something that comes before the borough and they find out really trapped it, and it finds doesn't neatly fit into this, that's what becomes the opportunity to go, uh, we're gonna amend this because we want that project. And that, that's the great thing, we're in Highland Park, that very flexible, um, making sure to come forward with the right thing, that benefits both parties. We're quick to amend these things, well, wish we were quicker, I'm backed up, but stay tuned in January, we're gonna have a few of these. Uh, but yeah, uh, that's, that's a good thought, but once it becomes our real concept and provided to us, and we seriously consider it, those types of things are like, ooh, definitely amend it for you, uh, because it's a benefit for the borough to consider these such uses.
So can I just kind of based on those two comments? If that's the kind of thing that we're talking like short term versus long term, short term reuse the existing building, long term mixed use four-story, change the plan to allow for rooftop use, whatever, if that's the ultimate goal, why is that stuff in here now? We could just like do, allow it now, it doesn't seem to have to do it, but.
I, I would say it's, it is there now, I think we're talking about very, very specific design elements. Uh, that you can, if we read through these standards, they're very consistent with the track A through D standards. Uh, but some of those standards you might see in track C and what you probably will be seeing for track A are very specific, because now we have a real project. Um, I, I could spend hours and hours and hours and days bankrupt the borough and try to figure out figure out an idealistic project, but it would not serve the borough. Um, but I think what we have is a very, very, very good baseline, four stories, fifty feet, reduced parking standards, uh, reduced, uh, step back standards, making sure that front zone, Meriden Avenue, curb cuts, uh, and more landscaping, stable infrastructure, uh, stable design and green infrastructure. I think all the elements that make for a great project still allow that for happen. If there's anything very, very specific that needs happening to change, that, that, that can happen, um, but I don't think we need to worry about getting to that final detail now.
When, when you saying, um, a few minutes ago said, uh, I forget what the exact context was, when you use the phrase short term for reusing the existing structure with the idea that down the road, four-story mixed use would be the ideal thing.
Right.
What does that mean for something like this short term, seven, five years, fifteen years?
Uh, well, it's probably misnomer, I probably shouldn't have said short term, the short term could be forty years. Uh, depends on the lease that the property owner comes into agreement with the, uh, new tenant. Uh, we'll be curious ourselves because it does, would mean, well, I guess we're stuck with that for a while, but at least it's an active, hopefully, well-paying positions that act, that use downtown. Uh, so we'll be working with the property owner to make sure it fits.
It sounds like that would inform any redevelopment agreement when the time.
Yeah, and we can't restrict the lease agreement, I mean, that's the nature of all these agreements.
Bearing in mind the long-term use. Matt, why don't you go?
Yeah, um, uh, as, as Chris said, uh, we would love to have mixed use four stories tomorrow. Um, but that takes a partner that wants to do mixed use four stories tomorrow, and we don't have, the owner is very clear that that's not something that they're prepared to to, or are interested in moving forward with at this time, and so, um, uh, as a result, that's why this process of doing this, the, I'm not gonna say short term anymore, we're gonna say
interim.
Interim.
It's not temporary.
Um, uh, that's the reason for, for moving this forward. It, obviously, our goal would be to, to have it redeveloped, um, uh, into what we really want at some point, but that's not um, something that, that property owner is interested in at this point, so.
Yeah, technically, we could wait two years and then it could qualify under criteria B, that means we gotta wait two years at empty storefront. And that's, I don't think that's what the mayor and council wants to see, we do not, yeah.
Jeff? Thinking creatively, uh, so let's say you have, you know, a daycare or medical office facility from the right aid building. Um, given the reduced parking, uh, ratios and the really underutilized nature of one, one and a half acres, nothing this redevelopment prevents, let's say, the property owner from taking a part of the property and putting in a mixed use building, right? I mean, they could still do that under this redevelopment, right? If they realize that the, they have a lot of extra parking and they're not utilizing it, they could do that and they can, we don't need, we would not redevelopment plans written, so they could do that, like in the multiple buildings, you have a one-story medical office building, and you have a three-story mixed use building, you can do that, right?
Possibly. Breaking up the current building or?
Now, the, the lot is huge, so, yeah, so another building.
Adding another building to that lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in theory, I think what we just wanna avoid happening is another retail or auto-heavy center use behind that. It just, that's something we have to negotiate with the property.
It'd be, we couldn't do that, it could be negotiated, and that's the thing is, we're trying to get around this interim thing where we, there's something really want long-term, longer beyond interim use, but we have, we could, it could be a possible.
Or a mixed use building, yes, for sure.
Um, this, but just to be clear, the, um, cut through between the parking lot and South Third, we wouldn't wanna put a new building blocking off all access to their, right, through that.
I'm just saying hypothetically, it's possible, that's all.
Yeah, hypothetically, but I think, uh, access is.
Yeah. And one more, one more. Just a little bit of history, so, uh, but the right aid back in twenty fourteen, you were giving a little bit of history of the property. Um, the, I I don't know if it was two thousand five or two thousand seven, the, uh, the planning board. Um, to take the right out of the old redevelopment area. Um, there was some provision about making sure window, the windows on North Fourth were stayed open, you know, where you could see in and lighting them out. Some point in twenty fourteen. Right aid covered up those windows, had to come back here before the planning board because they had done so in violation of the condition of approval. And the agreement was that they would have art installation. So that's how the art installation got there. I was in the audience at that time, listening to important meeting. Um, and I see in 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 the redevelopment plan that that's going to continue as it looks like with the existing building.
Yeah, that was important to the administration and where mayor and council is. Two things, one to maintain the window treatments as well as the front door access.
If it gets torn down, those provisions are not, other words, like if there were a new building. The North Fourth facade shouldn't be art, like that shouldn't be like what? Then new building should have to be like, you should reimagine that, right? That the art display was a, was a compromise.
It was a reflection of the fact that they covered up the windows.
Yes, that was the whole point, that was the whole point, right? Because they had done so.
The question is, is the art display mandatory for any future development?
And I don't think it's, I suspect it's not.
Uh, no, not the standards we talked about, maintaining existing entrances to the building. Existing art displays that fall under subject to pain, six point five eleven, which is only where the adaptive reuse of the existing.
Okay, so that's all.
But if there's a brand new building, I'm sure there will be redevelopment and there'll be some sort of elements of that. Being maintained in some degree, but not exactly as.
Replace another way.
Yeah, or replace it some other way.
Ask for a mural on the whole side of the building.
Anyway.
In the master plan, is there a cap on the amount of mixed use residential, commercial? Uh, development for Raritan Avenue? So there's just kind of like unlimited buildings, many residential spaces.
Uh, I would say it's not that either. Uh, the master plan is more of a, the vision for development in general, what direction it should head into. These things you would be looking for will be zoning ordinance and those don't exist.
Okay, the reason I ask is because I know there's a residential element for the proposed use of this space. And I know that a lot of redevelopment that's come before the planning board has had that in it where it's like this could potentially be residential. My concern is that we are opening ourselves up without like, not saying that we shouldn't allow for the potential use of residential mixed use space. But if there is a limit to how much residential. Property get to built on Raritan Avenue and not leaving an opportunity for more commercial business to come into Highland Park. I mean, Highland Park is only so big. We only have so much space for commercial business to come in and have space for, um. Have building space for businesses that are larger than just your like small mom of restaurants. Um, so I say this just to say, um, for us to kind of keep that in mind with. The redevelopment that does come into Highland Park and as developers come and want to build. That we are looking towards not just having a lot of very expensive luxury apartment buildings and then no space for commercial business. So I don't know if there's any.
Doesn't, does the plan say you, the residential has to be on the upper floors, right? That's what these.
In this plan.
Yes.
Right, and I see that, that that's like we're not putting residential apartments on the ground floor. It leaves the ground floor, it's open for restaurants, stores.
Commercial activities or, yeah, offices, whatever it used to be.
Right, but if. I mean, there are, there are some buildings, sorry. For example, um, there's a, there was a space in Edison that was a food hall. And it was a big space and inside it had all these different food vendors and it was just like a food hall. And it required a large space that something like this right aid building could like take. And you could apply that same business model to this layout. Um, I just, I'm, I'm. I'm excited for the redevelopment of Highland Park, but it does give me a little bit of pause when I think that, you know. We could be losing opportunities for more commercial business to come in. Um, because we use all of our commercial business district for a small amount of commercial business on the bottom. And then the majority of the building, like seventy percent of the building is residential. And I'm just worried that that could keep happening with every new development. Because we allotted so much zoning for mixed use residential space.
Um, I understand your concern and just one way of, uh. Addressing that is, is if you look at track A, there's not a lot of retail space. There's essentially one on the corner, but or track C, but if you look at track A, there's a lot more, um, commercial space. And so the, the idea was that the first development out of the chute, we wanted to focus on getting people down there. The second development on track A has a lot, has significantly more resident, uh, uh, commercial space. And and so that's something we've talked about, the need that we have to make sure that we have places for businesses to go. And so we, I don't know if we formalize that, but we certainly are aware that we need to have improved. Um, uh, as bigger, um, more, more modern types of commercial spaces. And so the, the difference between A and C is that we recognize that A was going to have a little bit of commercial. But, uh, or it seems to have a little bit commercial, but A was going to have a lot more. And so we anticipate that we came to a development of that process. So we understand the need for more commercial space as well. Um, but one second.
And I think when we look at track B in the future, whether it's standalone or made part of Sunoco, BB Biggs or wherever. That's another opportunity for more commercial space. Right now, there is none, literally none.
Right.
Be that's active. That being said, if I'm hearing you right, so it's the concern that perhaps the ground floor is being used is too much for residential.
No, that's not my concern. Um, it's clear that the ground floor would be residential, the ground floor would be commercial. My concern is that there isn't enough commercial space that, you know, I don't see that there is a shortage of need for restaurants. Um, I see restaurants popping up in other towns and they're very busy and very active. Um, I know Highland Park doesn't have the luxury of the same amount of space as like Edison, for example, and they go to the Soul Entertainment Plaza on one. That is very, very popular. We don't have that type of space, but I know that the demand for restaurant space or retail space is there. It's just that we lack the infrastructure to house those. Modern businesses. And so people are opening these businesses, but they're not looking to Highland Park for those, and I wish they would. So I just want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot by creating the opportunity for all of this residential. And we're not allowing adequate space for these modern companies and new businesses to come into our town.
Okay, all right. At the, oh, one more, one more, we'll take one more.
One word, just listening to everybody and kind of thinking about this as we're talking about it. So this is, we've seen a lot of like redevelopment plans over the last few years in front of the planning board. And one thing that jumped out to me when, uh, we got the materials for this meeting was how fast the turnaround was for this. Like this closed relatively recently and we've got a redevelopment plan and. That's good, we want to, you know, fast turnaround on this stuff. Um, but a few minutes ago, and I I forget who exactly said it, might have been that, might have been Chris, somebody said. Uh, you know, we might get stuck with the existing building. That's the expression that somebody used. And if we're going to be concerned that we're going to get stuck with the existing building, then. That indicates that that's not what we want, right? Like, the, the redevelopment plan permits the existing building and, uh, other uses, mixed use, whatever, right? We're concerned that, as again, I forget who said it, we might get stuck with the existing building. Um, there are things that we've seen that are pretty time sensitive, like the, uh, stop and shop, like we need to get a new supermarket in there. And that was not a time to nitpick over the details, like we need a supermarket account, right? So it's like, go. Um, but this is not the same kind of thing. We have a new pharmacy opening right across the street from this. We have Ignite just down the street, a couple of blocks. Um, there's not like a void in terms of a need that is not being met for the community because this site is not occupied by right aid, right? And so what I'm trying to articulate here is I don't think we have the urgency to rush like we did in that past case. And if we're worried about this plan, uh, permits something that we might get stuck with, then. That doesn't sound like it effectuates the goals of the master plan. And that's concerning to me that there's been a lot of concern over this building is not ideal for the downtown. But we're building in like extra stuff into here that allows us to keep fundamentally that same site. And as Jeff articulated earlier, that risks putting things in place that are then difficult to undo to actually effectuate those things down the road. Whether it's five years, ten years, forty years, whatever it is, um.
Okay, I I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the thing to keep in mind is that it's not that we're getting stuck with, that's the building that's there now. That the owner of the property says, this is my building, I'm not looking to change it. So all this redevelopment can do is give a path that if someone comes sniffing around to the current owner wanting to build something different. It makes it easier for the current owner to be like, you know what, maybe this isn't such a bad idea. But the concept of getting stuck with it, there's nothing in this plan that we could do or even would impose on a current owner to say, you can't have what you already have. Because they have it. So I hear what you're saying, but I think a plan that would actively inhibit the current use against the owner would be. Not only, I I would have a negative reaction.
I do want to say, I think there's a phrase, there's a phrase that people tend to use, and it sort of applies here, in my opinion. It's not a legal phrase, but it says in effect, that don't let the perfect be the color of the good. And and I think that that's something that you have to be concerned about. You know, as Chris has said any number of times, uh, does the, does the borough want to end up having the perfect? Uh, in place and then have the building sit for the next ten years, as is the case down the road on Raritan Avenue. Where there's, there's a, as you all know, uh, there's a site that's been sitting and sitting and sitting. Um, but there's, there's other external reasons for that too. But the fact of the matter is that. It's an attempt to try to move forward incrementally. And that seems to me that what's, what the intent of this whole thing is, but unless Chris doesn't know.
No, you're right, uh, yeah, it is a very flexibility to property owner in, in in collaboration with that also gain access for better circulation. Uh, that also benefits the farmer's market.
I think this very similarly to when we did the plan for the old stop shop where we said, okay, we have a chance, we have an opportunity. Let's make a plan based on what we ideally want. And then whatever goes in, goes in. What we got is the same building footprint we had previously, we had a little bit improved, new tenant, cleaned up building. And in the future, someday in the probably, and not anywhere near future, but who knows? There's a path to get what the town wants eventually. So we got our grocery stores in the same building footprint. We didn't get to move everything up to the front of the lot like we would have loved. It is what it is. We, we, the options were given and the owner who owns their property made the decisions they made and we got an okay compromise.
I think what what I want to articulate is that this plan seems to go out of its way to incentivize keeping it the same footprint. Rather than kind of saying, well, you keep it the same, but like all these other options, this kind of. Incentivizes doing the opposite of what we would like to see happen.
Oh, I don't have that impression at all. I actually think it's what you just said, that it's, you can keep it the way you want, but here's an incentive and a path to do other things. Would you like to do these lovely other things?
So, so if I would just make, the fact that the expanded uses for redevelopment mostly involve, are involved in keeping the building the same. Right, the daycare use, the, the medical office uses would, I think, keep the same building, would be just repurpose the building. That seems to incentivize, that's what I mean, I say incentivizes keeping it the same rather than.
I think it's a fair observation that the expanded uses don't explicitly contemplate for cutting up the building into pieces and preserving it. But I actually kind of agree with Kalidra on that point, that I don't think it's innately harmful to have one or two preserved larger facilities for a larger retail establishment. Especially in that area that's going to have this parking lot with this perspective planned and connected put through. Um, so while I I can respect, me personally can respect and appreciate that in a perfect world where we were designing from the ground up. We changed the whole structure, given what we have and what we're working with. I I actually don't think it's a terrible idea to have a larger footprint commercial space just sitting there ready to go. And if someday we get a building that's four stories with housing over it, I'm okay with that too, but we're working where we are. So I I think this plan is working to forward and foster the master plan to encourage these alternate developments in the face of a property owner. Who has not expressed an interest in doing so at this point, so that's.
To piggyback on what you're saying, I do think that the way this is laid out is applicable to the building in its current style and size and shape. But it's also, um, making this building attractive to a potential buyer should the owner of the building decide to sell it. And if they do decide to sell it, it opens up possibilities for someone who may want to demolish this building and build something new or add to the existing building. And it's giving that cap away for that.
And that's what the, really the first set of permitted principal uses, which is sort of a copy paste from track A to D. I mean, we really developed that to death with the right bulk standards. But we didn't really give it much airtime because we've done it so many times, we, we know it works. It's a lot, very generous, uh, and does encourage mixed use development or even single use development. But the primary focus was to give the property owner some leeway, but also have, give the ability. Uh, it will give the borough the ability to have that cross access, and use image is extremely important for circulation.
Jeff, you have one more.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing is, and you've said in your, your testimony is that the property, current property owner wants to, does not want to do redevelopment. Wants to find a tenant. And what sounds like this redevelopment plan trying to do is say, listen, that's what your intention is. There are a couple of things, come into the redevelopment, go down the redevelopment route and get into a redevelopment agreement. So there are a couple of things we need, like cross access, right? So that's, that's seem to be the, like, I I'm not, I I don't like that we'll wait around for, you know, forty years for a four story building. But I get the reality is first, the property owner has property rights and they want to use the building as it is. And unless we're going to buy it from them, that's what we're not going to do, you know, or find someone who can do it, like, we're good, you can do that. Or she can do that, whatever, they, they can bet our owner can reuse the building. And then you have to go through redevelopment, they could just find a tenant, I mean, they can find a tenant and just do it right now. And this redevelopment plan offers that we could get something that we really want, which is that quality access. And a couple of other things that we would get, we would not get in a simple site plan review. To get those other things, we need to redeveloping, the redevelopment route. Is that what I'm hearing, that's sort of, okay.
That's why the agreement is so powerful, because the planning board can't acquire. Uh, but there's nothing stopping from property owner from doing a mixed use building, which we want anyway, it's just. At this point, at least our observation is that the property owner wants the redevelopment powers, which we can't get because it won't qualify for redevelopment. We're, we're stuck under rehabilitation destination.
So in a sense that we're, we're, we're going to have this one story building for decades. I come back to the point where if this is a big site, relatively big site for Highland Park. If the access works, there could be another building behind this building.
Absolutely.
And we can get some residential, I mean, I actually, we just said for the, for the uses again, you could have it just a residential building. So long as the residential uses don't front Raritan or Fourth.
On Raritan.
On Raritan. You can have a mixed use, not mixed use, you can just have a residential apartment building. That would add the residential that we want, that we say what we need. Uh, so we wouldn't have that part on top of the right aid building, but we could still get some residential on it.
In concept, yes.
In concept, well, I I'm hoping that that was considered in, as you drafted this, that that could be.
Uh, it was.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, I think, I think these discussions are.
Are done.
I reserve, I, 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 I used my time.
Are important and illuminating, um, but at this moment, I'm going to actually open it up next to the public to see if there's any members of the public who wish to be heard. On the ordinance proposal. If anyone at home who wants to play along? All right, and seeing nobody in the audience, I'll close the public comment portion on tonight's consistency review. All right, so. Like I said, I appreciate everyone's input, I think it's very interesting and I think it's always appreciated. And especially since we have Matt's ear and can hold him hostage and he can listen to all these concerns as we sit here. So with that, I, and I I'm okay if people want to disagree, I didn't hear anything specific to recommend as amendments to the plan out of the board. A lot of comment, a lot of policy feedback. A lot of comment, a lot of policy feedback, all very helpful.
Can we recommend amendments? I didn't even realize that was something.
Uh, we, our, our motion is to decide if this is substantially compliant.
That's correct.
Or to effectuate the master plan.
If you do make amendments, now you're causing a problem. Because then what's going to end up happening, if they are considered to be of any substance, then the first, then they're not going to be able to, uh, second reading. They're going to have to reintroduce this and go through the process again. So it does cause a delay. Which I don't get the impression voted on as a separate thing.
Oh, well, if, if, if they were substantial enough, they'd have to go back for rediscovery.
For us, like, would that be, like, if someone was to offer an amendment, would that have to be a vote among all of us as to whether it's included in the.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have, we have just one voice, although you can talk Matt's ear off all you want. So with that, um, I, uh.
Can I offer amendment to say inappropriate?
It is, it is not inappropriate and then we can.
It, it would have to, well, uh, I guess we, we need to hear what the amendment is and whether or not the amendment is, is going to be. Um, substantial enough to create a problem that's going to then uh, place this back uh. Where they're going to have to reintroduce the whole.
Cause we've certainly sent things back with recommendations for the process. Um, but like, what's your suggestion?
Let me ask a question, because I'm, I, like I said way back at the beginning, like the car circulation situation with a daycare, like. I'm really uncomfortable with that at this point.
Let me, let me just interject. I, I understand you're comfortable, but the reality is statute requires it anyway.
Well, that's true, yeah, right, it's already in, right, okay, fair enough.
So that takes care of your.
That was, that was. I appreciate that Roger, we need to the punch. We don't need to have a policy discussion on the merits of a daycare.
If there's a daycare, you need to fix the circulation.
Oh, there's a lot that needs to be fixed.
So.
Absolutely.
I think you're at a point now, ladies and gentlemen, that you should be thinking about uh, making a recommendation back to the board, which is in the form of a motion. As to whether or not you find this is a uh, consistent with uh, the master plan as well as the uh, plan itself.
I can make, I make the motion.
You can. Go for it.
I make the motion that this uh, proposed redevelopment plan is not inconsistent.
No, we're actually going substantially inconsistent.
Respectfully, I think it is substantially consistent and not inconsistent. Because I do think we are dealing with both uh, uh, the uh, local redevelopment law as well as the, in this the language law. And unfortunately, that language really stinks. Luckily, I didn't uh, offer it. So it is, is not, is not inconsistent with the master plan and is substantially consistent with the master plan. So that's the way the resolution.
Yeah.
You like that?
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion to approve and I have a second. We'll take a vote call, please. Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Ms. Hazzie?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Ho?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah.
Mr. Sternberg now?
Uh, obviously I have my reservations. I'm great with like ninety-five percent of this. I don't get a lot out of veto, so, oh yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries. I'll prepare a resolution for the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Do we need to have a review vote on the language of the resolution or will the resolution connect?
No, the, the, the resol, no, you don't.
Cause I don't want to hold up the town if I just need to sign it.
Uh, the, the answer is the resolution will be made available and I, I will try to get it done as quickly as possible so that it'll be, I, I assume I'll send it, Jen, to you.
Yeah, the next, it's due, it's public hearing is scheduled for the twenty fifth this month.
I will make sure that the resolution is available in advance of the twenty fifth so that it can be distributed. And so that the governing body knows what the board has done. And I don't think that the resolution is going to be so modified by this board that it's going to be significantly uh, a concern to the governing body.
Fair enough. All right then, then we'll be good to go. All right, so that's the last, oh, yes, Alan.
Uh, I'd like to uh, deal with the issue with uh, eight ten north.
Oh, okay, well. Uh, you know what, we'll go, unless Scott has something super interesting he wants to tell us about what's happening around town.
Um, no, they're going to be starting demo that building shortly.
What building?
With the uh, North, North Second Building, eight ten North Second.
Oh, okay, well, let's, let's talk about that. Alan, what was your question on eight ten North Second?
Um, the.
Yeah.
The condition of approval number two. It says the, the applicant shall utilize a slow release catch basin as part of its stormwater attenuation plan. Which I believe those words came from uh, Roger.
Probably did, I, I.
And uh, I didn't remember that actually happening. I do remember the uh, engineer for the applicant saying that no imperious cover. There wasn't any, any changes to the water stops. Uh, so, and I checked with Bruce Cox before he retired and he said, he sent a email back to me that uh. That he didn't remember it either. So we'll, we'll cross it.
I'm sorry, you what?
We'll, we'll ask Roger, where did it come from? Cause I don't think it came from the planning board.
Well, if, if, is it in the resolution?
It's in the resolution.
Well, it, it's, it came from the planning board because even though it may have been my language, it, it was ultimately adopted by the planning board and it then becomes the planning board's language. It's, and. Re, re, repeat the language, because I didn't quite hear what you were saying.
Oh, okay.
In terms of the language.
The applicant shall utilize a slow release catch basin as part of its stormwater attenuation.
Okay, I can almost guarantee that is not language that I use on a daily basis. That is in, in all likelihood, language that would have come from Bruce's report uh, at some point during the course of the hearing. That's where I think the language came from. Now, I'd have to, i- i- is that an assumption on my part? Absolutely. Would I need to go back and take a look at Bruce's report in relation to the resolution on this application? Sure. And I can be happy to report to you at the next meeting.
But, okay, uh, uh, but I don't think from what the, the applicant's engineer or the applicant who was here last, last month. Uh, I don't think they understand, this is what, what we said then. This is what they, what they have to do.
Has, Scott, has this catch basin issue come up in the permit process?
No, they just applied for a demo. They didn't submit any of their, you know.
Yeah, I, I haven't received any plans, residential plans.
All right.
So this, this may be something, Alan, that's somewhat premature, but I mean, unfortunately, we can't, uh, unless we can Shanghai. Uh, Bruce, um, to get his, his further opinion, but I'll be happy to, to look at that and uh, try to, well, but I'm, I'm, I'll be, yeah, is that the. Is that the page of the resolution?
No, that's Bruce's.
Oh, that's Bruce's. I'll be happy to look at it in relation to Bruce's rather cryptic response. And I will be happy to also uh, indicate what's uh, in the resolution in relation to what was in Bruce's uh, report.
Scott, you said they're starting demolition?
They've given up their demo permit, they should be starting shortly on the interior.
Second street.
I thought they were going to.
Cause I, cause our.
What?
I thought they were going to redo the interior.
Yes, they're redoing the interior.
Oh, it was, okay, they're going, okay.
They're cutting the whole thing.
If there's a question, I'll ask you.
I'll be here.
Okay. If I, it's just a matter of finding the actual resolution, so.
Well, they get a copy of the resolution, so.
Well, I understand.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Can I steal that, Alan? Can I steal this?
Sure.
All right, then. Any other items not on the agenda that the board wants to talk about? Ready? All right, seeing that, I'm going to open up uh, the meeting one last time to the public, public for comments on any items not on the agenda. Sorry, anyone at home who wants to make a comment? All right, seeing no members of the public in the audience, I'm going to close the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I will solicit a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, everybody. We're getting real good at these plans.